Okay. Are you ready? All right, thank you, Brian. And thank you, everyone, for coming to our meeting tonight. The May 10th, 2021 meeting of the Homewood City Council. We are going to start with an introduction of the 4th grade Junior Patrol of Girl Scout Troop 350. And I don't know who's doing the introduction. Are they doing it?
Come on up, girls.
Y'all come on up to the microphone here.
And before they get started, I will tell you who... Can y'all stand in a line so I can see y'all? Yeah. So we have...oh, boy. Oh, okay. We have Lansing, Reed, Millie, Lilly, Julia, and Eleanor. I'm sorry, I did that out of order. Eleanor is next, and then Julia. And let's start with Julia, and if you would, kind of introduce your troop.
Okay, so we are Troop 350.
Come step up to the microphone a little bit, so they can hear you online. There you go.
Okay, we are Troop 350, and we are Girl Scout Troop 350, and we're in 4th grade.
And Eleanor, would you tell us why you've been here before?
We are here to learn about the inside government, and yeah.
Yeah. And then Lilly, what happened once y'all did that? I mean, y'all did a lot of work. You're making it sound really simple, but they actually did a lot of things to be able to get to this point and earn what they did. But tell us what you earned because of the work you put in.
I'm pretty sure with the last part of our Inside Government badge.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank y'all for being here, and I believe that y'all are going to lead us in the pledge in a second. All right, so before we do that, let's go ahead and have the invocation. Councillor Alamon's gonna do that for us, and if y'all will just hang out, then we're gonna get you to do the pledge afterwards. Everyone, please stand.
Sorry, girls, excuse me.
He don't like.
Nice, thank you, Councillor Harden.
Dear wise and loving God, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. I am asking that you would graciously grant this council wisdom amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen. Thank you very much. All right, girls, y'all will come back up, and then everyone will face the flag. Y'all are up whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. All right, well, that's one of the better starts to our meetings. Let me formally call this meeting to order, and Ms. Salter, if you will call, roll, please.
Yes, sir. Councillor Waltney?
Here.
Councillor Geer?
Here.
Councillor Alamon?
Here.
Great, great, by the way. Councillor Wolverton?
Here.
Councillor Sims?
Here.
Councillor Jones?
Here.
Councillor Smith?
Here.
Councillor Nels?
Here.
Councillor Andrus?
Here.
Councillor Harden?
Here.
President Wyatt?
Here.
Get everybody present.
Thank you very much. All right, next item is the reading of the minutes from our April 26, 2021 meeting. These were circulated around this afternoon. I don't know if everyone got a chance to look at them, then I would ask for a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of such minutes and for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eleven to zero. Next, we'll go to board vacancies. We have two that we need to open. The first is the Park Board for Ward 2, which has come open, I believe the...
Chris Bailey.
Yeah, Chris Bailey moved, so how long do y'all want? Do you want two weeks, or you think you need longer than that?
I think Berkeley Life would have it being in place by July's meeting.
By July's meeting?
Two weeks.
You want to start with two weeks?
I think there'll be...
Month?
Month?
Yeah.
Okay, so that takes us to...
The 24th meeting?
Well, no, it'll be our first meeting in June, the 14th. It'll be June...does that sound right?
They want it more than two weeks?
They did.
Okay, that'd be June 14th.
Okay, so we'll do it to June 14th at 4:30?
Yes, sir.
We also have an at-large position for the HEC. Michael Churchman has had to step back from that position, so we will need to fill his unexpired term, which will last until April of 2023. Let's also do that one to June 14th at 4:30.
If there's a lot of people in that one on the 14th, y'all will have to...if y'all can, interview sometime that week after the week, because your next meeting will be 28, so y'all just plan on interviewing those two weeks.
Yep, we'll interview those two weeks, and then y'all can appoint...we'll appoint for on the 28th, so that that's in place for the July meeting.
Okay, shot them both at 4:30 on the 14th.
All right.
Ms. Wolverton, I have that as an at-large position.
Yeah, he's in Ward 3, but it's an at-large position.
The HEC is an at-large position, yes.
So I'm saying anybody can apply?
Anybody can apply for that.
I was making sure that you need that, okay.
Yep, yep. All right. Any other board vacancies or anything I'm missing for tonight? Okay. Next, we've got a few additions to the agenda. First, to the committee referral section will be 08-05-21, request for consideration to join the Kahaba Waste Authority, brought to us by Berkeley Squires and the mayor. Next, 09-05-21, request to authorize mayor to sign contract with Sane Associates for engineering consulting work on Mamie Foster 18th Street project, brought to us by Kale Smith. Then 11-05-21, request to authorize the mayor...pay attention here. The mayor to sign a temporary construction easement regarding the Barber property.
Is that from me?
It's from me, and that'll go to Finance, which means that we have agreement with Barber.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Where's 08-05-21?
They're all going to Finance.
They're...I'm sorry, they're all going to Finance.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Your popular...
Just for you. Thank you. Appreciate it, okay.
All right. We also have one addition to other new business tonight, which will be 10-05-21, request to authorize mayor to sign a contract with Pitney Bowes for postage lease in City Clerk Finance Department, brought to us by Robert Brigitte and Melody Salter. All right, that is all the additions to the committee referral agenda. We'll talk about that later.
Move to approve, second. amended agenda.
So we have a motion from Mr. Jones, a second from Mr. Waltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to zero. All right, which brings us to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's also 11 to zero. Which brings us to the old business agenda. First item is 13-02-21, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of change to landscaping and tree requirements, brought to us by Councillors Waltney and Andrus. This was referred to us from Planning Commission with a 5-0-1 favorable vote. This is the infamous tree ordinance that we have been looking forward to, and I will start with a report from PND.
The committee voted 5 to 0 to refer this item back to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Councillor Waltney and seconded by Councillor Nels.
All right. With that, I will open the public hearing, but that's about all we're gonna do tonight. We have been asked to hold off on it for another...for one more meeting to give the BEZ department some...a little bit more time to look at it, and so we will just carry this public hearing over to our next meeting. Yeah, Mr. Simpson.
So, I mean, even though we're gonna carry it over, if someone's here to speak to it tonight, they should not go ahead and speak?
Should not speak tonight. We're gonna wait and speak the next time, so that BEZ can give them the benefit of what their review has come up with, and then we'll talk about it the next time. All right, so with that, we'll move on to 05-04-21, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to rezone two small strips of land resulting from one resurvey. Request to rezone a strip of land at 1316 Sterrett Avenue to be added to 1320 Sterrett Avenue from PR1 to NPD, and to rezone a strip of land at 320 Sterrett Avenue to be added to 316 Sterrett Avenue from NPD to PR1. The applicant is Ronald Van Erv and Charles Williams, and this is brought to us by Vicki Smith from the zoning department. Planning Commission had a vote of 9 to 0 favorable recommendation of this rezone, and we will again start with a report from PND, Ms. Andrus.
The committee met, and after hearing from Vicki Smith from BEZ, voted 5 to 0 to recommend referring this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Councillor Wolverton and seconded by Councillor Simpson.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we will open the public hearing. And do we have someone to speak to this tonight? Mr. Pew, do you have anything on this? Or I don't see Vicki.
Vicki's actually handling this, she's on Zoom, I believe.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
She's live.
Vicki, are you on Zoom?
She is not.
Okay. I saw someone else stand up. Would you happen to be one of the homeowners?
Yes.
Okay, well, why don't you come on up, and you can explain to us what's going on?
Okay.
And Brian has been good enough to put a diagram up for us.
Yeah, it's basically it.
Very basically.
Rudimentary.
Got it. If you will, give us your name, please.
My name's Ronald Van Erv, and I'm the owner of 316 Sterrett Avenue. Then Chuck's my neighbor next door, and all we're doing is swapping out two little parcels of land, basically about a foot wide on one side, a foot and a half on the backside, and just the fact that these were two different zones is why we had to go in front of the zoning committee to just get approved. Otherwise, it wouldn't have to have been done.
Okay.
Did you sign in, sir?
What's that?
We signed in on the sheet of paper.
Okay.
You said Ronald Van Erv?
Yeah, Ronald Van Erv.
If you'd have signed in, that way I didn't make sure everybody's name right.
All right.
All right, do we have anyone else here to speak for or against this item?
And Vicki just joined on, so you can call on her if you need to.
And Vicki, if you have anything to add, certainly feel free.
Thank you. I don't have anything to add. It's confusing as it's spelled out, but if you look at the drawing, it's really pretty simple.
Okay, all right. Just one more time, anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will close the public hearing and ask the council if they've got any comments or questions. Mr. Simpson.
I would just make the comment that I know at the Planning Commission meeting, there was a lot of discussion with the neighbors about ingress egress, and that those concerns have been addressed. I spoke to some of the neighbors this past weekend, and they feel good about everything going forward. And just one more time, could you explain the purpose of the, you know, the swap, what you're planning to do as far as improvements?
Sure, yeah. On the...actually, on the backside of our property between...there was two walls, and one was a cement wall. They're both on Chuck's side of the property, and what he's doing is he's just transferring that piece of property to me, so that way we have it on our side, and the division of our property will run between the two walls. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, Mr. Kendrick, if you could give us the first reading.
Sure, it's an ordinance to further amend 16...ordinance 1602 of the City of Homewood entitled zoning ordinance and the zoning map, where the Planning Commission has recommended that certain parcels of property described herein be rezoned from PRD...PR1, Land Residence or District, to NPD, and that the second parcel be rezoned from NPD to PR1. Whereas the City Council says it's May 10th, it's a public hearing, now therefore be ordained as follows...excuse me. The property situated at 316 Sterrett Avenue shall be rezoned from its current zoning PR1 and rezoned to NPD Neighborhood Preservation District, subject to a proffer that the applicant has voluntarily made, that there will be no additional access to Barrier Avenue. Section 2, that the following described property at 320 Sterrett Avenue shall be rezoned from its current zoning classification, NPD, and rezoned to PR1. Section 3, that from and after the act of this ordinance, the use is permitted in PR1 and NPD, plus the proffers as referred to in paragraphs 1 and 2 above, shall control the uses of this property. Section 4, that the time and place for the public hearing is May 10th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, that the city clerk has given notice of as required by law. Section 7, if any party provision ordinance declared to be unconstitutional invalid by Court of Compt์ Jurisdictions, all other parts remain in full force of effect. Section 8, the ordinance become effective upon passage by the City Council and its approval by the mayor, as otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. If there are no questions or comments after the first reading, I would entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Andrus, second from Mr. Harden. And roll call vote, please. Ms. Salter.
Yeah, sorry, was that Andrus and Harden?
Yes.
Okay, Councillor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councillor Geer?
Yes.
Councillor Alamon?
Yes.
Councillor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councillor Sims?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor Smith?
Yes.
Councillor Nels?
Yes.
Councillor Andrus?
Yes.
Councillor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes.
All right, so that's 11 to zero, and now I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nels. Another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Okay, and this will be 28 of...about...Councillor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councillor Geer?
Yes.
Councillor Alamon?
Yes.
Councillor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councillor Sims?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor Smith?
Yes.
Councillor Nels?
Yes.
Councillor Andrus?
Yes.
Councillor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
All right, so that's also 11 to zero, and this ordinance is 28-05. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, next item, 06-04-21, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to declare the property at 307 West Lindwood drive a public nuisance, brought to us by Wyatt Pew of our BEZ department. And we will start with a report from Mr. Pew.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. After the abatement board recommended this property as an unsafe structure, in January, I sent out a notice of unsafe structure. Since that time, I've received no correspondence from anyone back on this house. In fact, I sent out a total of two unsafe notices, one certified and one just regular mail, in hopes that, you know, one of them would reach, but I've not received any correspondence. Since then, the property's just sat there. It's continued to remain open. The unsafe conditions are outlined in the report that I left on your...on the dais in front of you there. Among the unsafe conditions are the roof is leaking in several places, and it's been allowed to leak to the point where it's starting to collapse inside. Both the cellar door stands open, and the back door is wide open. The neighbors witnessed...the neighbors have reported that they've witnessed people coming and going. I mean, they've...I don't know if it's just, you know, people having fun, or curious people, I don't really know, but...and when I was there about a month ago, and then again just a couple of days ago, last Friday, the...there were feral cats that are living in the house, as evidenced by the feces in the picture. So I recommend that this be declared a public nuisance as it is an unsafe structure.
I would move to make that...oh.
Hold on.
Sorry. Oh, we have to close the public hearing.
I gotta open the public hearing.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I haven't had the public hearing again.
Yes, sir. Publish notice in the...
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Pew. So let me open this public hearing and ask if there's anyone here to speak to this item.
And I would just like to say, this house has been cited multiple times for overgrowth for these same exact things, and the neighbors do see people sneaking into and out of the house, and there are rodents. Maybe the rodents aren't so bad now that there's the feral cats, though. I don't know, that might be the upside. So this is an ongoing, not being corrected nuisance.
Can you...I remember this structure, and I remember the germs, it's because the germs... Can you refresh us on what we did? Because I know we must have done something, because I know it was in this saying... So the owner doesn't live in town?
No, no, no. She lives in Forest Park. She lives in Forest Park.
Oh, okay, but it's not responsive. What did we do previously?
Scott Cook came and got a weed abatement condemnation, and so the yard was cleared. The yard had grown up, you know, just huge weeds and trash trees and stuff, so we did... the city did go in and clear the yard. It's starting to come back.
If I'm not mistaken, the last yard abatement is partly why it came before the abatement board, was it not? I mean, I thought that some of these concerns were kind of brought up while we were talking about the overhead issues.
It's been opened for...this has been going on for a long time. It hasn't...this isn't new. It wasn't the last time they cleaned the yard that they found the doors were unlocked. It's been open for a long time.
Right, I'm saying it just brought it back freshly, and we went ahead and kicked it to the abatement board at that point, I thought, but at any rate, that...
Sorry, don't recall.
Yeah, the short answer is, we've done the yard, we haven't done the house yet, now we're doing the house.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else to...let me just...I'm gonna come back to you. Anyone else from the public to speak to this item? Not, and I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Alamon, have you had a comment?
I just had a question as to if the property owner has been unresponsive, and I'm just curious to if we approve all this, what is the result? What is their responsibility thereafter? Just out of curiosity, as I'm new and I'm trying to learn.
Sure. So I'm gonna get...I may get portions of this wrong, so y'all correct me, but basically what we do is this is to condemn the property. This is a vote to condemn the property. They have 30 days to address it, to try to remedy any unsafe conditions.
They have 30 days to appeal.
And to appeal, and in which time they can remedy it if they want to. And then the process moves forward at that point, ending in a...ending in us tearing the house down, leaving the lien on the property.
And I would say...
That's what I'm saying, placing the lien, so we do try to recuperate. That's what I'm trying, okay.
We review our costs.
And she...and she...the person who owns the house does know...I mean, people have been in contact with the owner, and she's aware of the issues, but hasn't addressed them, so...
No, thank you, I just...yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Someone is aware of the issues, because I've sent inspectors out to post placards on it three times, and three times they've been removed.
Yeah.
So I don't know who's doing that, but...
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain...
Did she pay? I mean, we had to go out and do some yard work, I'll call it. Did we get money from that?
There's a lien.
There's a lien on the property for that.
There's a lien on the property.
Okay, so we've not had...I mean, we've had zero response from her in the past, ever.
Correct.
And now, I would move to approve this being declared a nuisance.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second for Mr. Wolverton.
This motion really is unsafe structure.
Unsafe structure, okay.
Second.
All right. Motion for Ms. Smith, second for Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero, and that is Resolution 2162. All right, Mr. Pew, you just hang out there for a while.
Yes, sir.
Next item is 07-04-21, public hearing set for tonight to consider...for consideration to declare the property at 809 Columbiana Road a public nuisance, also brought to us by Mr. Pew, and we'll start with your report.
Yes, sir, this one's been sitting empty for quite a long time, but in January, the abatement board recommended this as an unsafe structure, when a tree, gigantic tree, actually fell diagonally across the house, and I don't even think the tree slowed down when it hit the house, it went all the way through it. So I sent a notice of unsafe structure. I did receive a...just a very brief letter back. It was really delayed in coming to me, but it didn't really outline any action, it just simply requested that we not move forward with condemnation. However, just this past Friday, I was contacted by a gentleman who said he had closed on the property. He just closed on the property and has some plans to do something with it. But as you can see by the pictures, the house is terribly unsafe. I mean, I wouldn't recommend anyone even go in it to inspect it. There are portions of it that could literally collapse at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Pew, and let me open the public hearing for this matter, and ask if there's anyone to speak to this item.
There are several people on Zoom related to this property.
If you would raise your hand on Zoom, Brian can unmute you, if anyone wants to speak. Okay, Tony? And if you will, give your name first, please. You could go ahead, Tony. Okay, we'll move on to Julia.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I am at 811 Columbiana Road, and as Wyatt Pew can attest, I've been extremely interested. We've had quite a few emails and phone calls about this. I am pardoned by having met the new owner this afternoon. I saw him outside, I saw him next door, but it has been...was a longstanding issue, and I am...what I'm interested in also is that we make sure that it is brought to a safe standard very quickly. I'm not sure what sort of responsibility the new owner has in making sure that...in other words, I don't want to start the process. I hope I and all the neighbors don't have to wait very long to find out what's going to happen. Does it start all over again? What is the new process?
So we can...to answer that question, we can still move forward tonight, or we can give the new owner some time. That'll be up to the council's decision here in a second, but that'll just be whatever the council wants to do, whether it could be...we can move forward tonight, we could carry it over tonight, we could drop it tonight and start the whole process over. I don't want to speak for the rest of the council, but I'd be surprised if we start the whole process over, so...
What determines what we do?
The council will vote on that. That will be the council vote as to how we move forward, but we need to get through the public hearing first.
I see.
And can you give us your name real quick?
That's Julia Kontur.
Yes, my name is Julia Kihano. I live next door to the property in question. It has been empty, that I know of, for certain. It has been more than a public nuisance. It's been extremely difficult to live next to it all of this time. That's why I, I mean, you said you're voting for it. Are we going to hear the plans of Mr.?
You will.
I imagine, it, it appears that Mr. Odo is about to tell us what he will be doing with it.
I, I don't know if Mr. Odo is here tonight to do that or not, but we, we will get through the public hearing and then, and then we will make a decision on how to move forward here in just a second.
I see. Okay.
All right. Brian, who else do we have?
Next, next is Virginia.
Hi. If, if it's okay, if Tony Odo is available, the new owner, I think it might be appropriate for him to go first. Or I'm happy to speak.
Absolutely. He didn't unmute last time. Mr. Odo, can you speak now? He's clearly having something not right. So Virginia, you can go ahead.
Okay, sure. Okay, I, so I sent an email to the council members earlier today. So I think you have seen some of the history behind this. I think the tree fell in late August. The previous owner put a tarp on it and removed the tree. That didn't last very long. By the time of the abatement board meeting in October, the house was still caving in on itself. The tarp was not functioning. There's been graffiti and evidence of wildlife living inside. It's just not a safe structure. You can tell from the pictures. It's uncomfortable to walk by and not know what's inside. And we, our street has, has really improved over the years and has become a place where lots of families live. And we're out in the yards and we really would like to have this remedied soon. I'm encouraged to hear that there is a new owner. We obviously want to be supportive of the new owner. But I do not want that to extend the time where we have this unsafe structure down our street. So while we're sympathetic to him maybe not have no, not, not knowing that this was a problem, it has been a problem for us for a long time. And we have been waiting a significant period of time for it to be remedied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll give Mr. Odo one more shot. Okay. There you go. One more shot. Okay. All right. Is there anyone else? Do we have another hand?
Yeah, there is online. Thomas Swain.
All right.
My name is Thomas Swain, and I live at 835 Columbiana Road. And I am here simply to second the, what Julia and Virginia have already said. The structure, the dilapidated structure that exists there is health and safety hazard. And I hope that the council moves fastly to, to remedy this so that our street neighborhood is safe and, and clean.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else here to speak to this item? Or on Zoom to speak to this item? Okay. Then with that, I will close the public hearing and take comments from the council or questions. Ms. Smith?
You know, we were discussing this before. And while I do feel for Mr. Odo, having not known about the situation, clearly bought the house, I guess, closed on it last week without knowing, I feel like that's not okay. And, and I don't think, I don't think it's fair to the neighbors to continue to have to live next to that. And perhaps, you know, we, we, you have a 30-day appeal period, so he could certainly remedy that prior to the 30 days being up. And I, I just don't think we can continue to ask the neighbors to live next to that structure. It's not safe for them. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Paul, can I add to that? We also have the option to allow extension. Is that not correct? So we could delay the, the 30-day notification period occurs, and then after that notification period, we don't have to immediately demolish the house. We can pull off.
Correct. I'm going to, I'm going to say it a little differently than you did. The appeal time is still 30 days. We do not have to act to, to immediately following that to take down the house. So we can, we can take more time if we see that he's making significant progress within that 30 days.
I, yeah. Mr. Wolf? I agree with everything that's been said. I'm, I mean, I'm not a structural engineer, but I have a hard time believing that what's there can be remedied short of demolishing it anyway. So I would move to condemn.
I have a quick question. In just terms of process, like this got, came to the abatement board in January. We're in May. Why does it take like five months to get to this point?
Mr. Pugh, you may be, there, there's a certain amount of time, a process that goes through, but I, I think you can address that better than I can.
Yes. What happens is, once the abatement board recommends this as an unsafe structure, then I have to send a notice of unsafe structure, which gives them a window of time. 60 days minimum in order to abate the nuisance. And so that, that's, that accounts for some of the delay in time. And then once that time ends, then we start making preparations to advertise it. And so there's, it's never just right on the mark, 60 days that we're here in council, so.
Okay, thank you.
That accounts for it.
All right.
I just wanted to add to that, from my understanding, with this property in particular, there was some delay due to additional time for notification because of the pandemic. So obviously, the neighbors have been patient waiting and, you know, we're, it is time for action, you know, on their behalf to be accountable. I have heard that Mr. Odo did, in discussion with the neighbor, talk about that his plan is to tear down the existing property and to do so with a shortage of, you know, contractors at this time. It may take June until July, but I think for us, it's important to make sure the accountability's there and to move forward.
All right. So we have a motion, motion to declare this property as unsafe. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Wolverton, second.
Give it to Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith, was it you?
No, I, no.
I thought, I think it was Ms. Nelms.
I think it was everybody.
Okay. All right. We're going to give it to Ms. Nelms. So Wolverton and Nelms.
I'll be like, I'll fix it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be resolution 2163. All right. Which brings us to the next item, 140421. Public hearing set for tonight for consideration to permit a front yard fence variance at 1850 Lake Ridge Road. Brought to us by Chase Bowers, the homeowner and wife of BZ. We'll start with a report from special issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes. The committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to throw this item out to the full council without a recommendation. Pending the public hearing tonight, the motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, I will open this public hearing. And I don't know, Mr. Pugh, you want to speak to it? Or Mr. Bowers, you want to speak to it first?
However, if you want me to give you a little.
Sure. Why don't you give us a, give us a short summary?
Okay. Mr. Bowers appeared before you last time, well, in the committee meetings last week to request a front yard fence variance. There's a site plan showing roughly where it is. I believe Counselor Smith, you had asked me how far back it is. It's roughly 107 feet from the front side of the fence. One of the items, one of the issues that, that came up, that was a question, was since this was done by a professional landscaping company, how did it happen without a permit or without any plan review? Since that time, I reached out to the company that did the actual work. And they, the representative is actually here tonight to speak to that if you have any questions for him as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Bowers, you have anything to add? Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak to this item? Yeah, can you come on up, please? And if you will, just give us your name and sign in there.
My name's Anna Frances Bradley. I live at 1831 Lake Ridge Road. My family and I do. And I see this house and property every day. I actually sold it a couple of times. I'm a realtor locally. And I think it looks great. The house is beautiful. The light's beautiful. And for safety reasons, it was necessary. There's no backyard for people to play in or hang out in. So the front yard fencing is necessary for their family and future families.
Thank you, Bert.
Could you sign in?
Okay.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Is the, is the company not here?
Yeah. Is someone from the fence company here? Or the? If you will, just give us your name and also sign in, please.
Okay. My name is Brian Allen with Father Nature Landscapes. We're the ones that designed and had the fence built for Mr. Bowers.
Okay. Can you tell us why there wasn't a permit pulled for that?
Frankly, not going to lie, because it was an oversight and should have happened and did not. And we, I guess, with the, I, I think, best way I could describe it is with the workload we've had over the course of the past 12 months with COVID and everything, I failed to dot i's and cross t's on this one and go through the permitting process. But as I explained to Mr. Pugh, there, there was never any intent to purposely avoid that. It was simply a matter of want to get this done, knocked out for the homeowner, and failed to apply for the permit as we should.
And I have a question.
Yeah.
And it, it's not just the lack of a permit, it's also the lack of requesting the variance because we don't allow front yard fences. So not only did we not get a permit, there was no, nobody went through the process of getting the variance asked for.
Absolutely, yeah. I, I knew nothing about needing a variance for that. Assumed that we would be fine to build a fence there based on the property, based on the layout of the property and seeing it and knowing that that is really the only workable or the only usable at place in the yard for the kids to play. It seemed like a reasonable place to fence in. And so I know in, like, places like Edgewood and other areas of town, I was well aware that, okay, yes, I've had experiences with that where we could not build a fence in a front yard. Absolutely did not, never considered the fact that that would be a problem at this spot.
It's a citywide ordinance. It's not, we don't, we don't spot do that.
Front yard fences anywhere.
Yeah. The only places there are front yard fences are when people have come here and asked for variances in advance. And it's usually for a specific reason.
Got you. Yeah. Yeah, I was unaware of that, unfortunately.
Anyone else with any questions or comments?
I do have a quick question. How did this come to our attention? Did, was it reported or did we, did they pull a permit for something else?
Mr. Pugh, do you know that, the answer to that question?
Yes, sir. Scott Cook actually identified this violation in his rounds.
Well, and, and I understand that you weren't trying to skirt any rules or anything, but obviously it is important, there's a reason for this, the process to be in place. By getting a permit, then you would, would have found out about the variance that it was needed. And so that's, that's sort of where we broke down. And, and it's important that we, we do follow the rules because otherwise, we, we end up with people in different situations and it's, it's harder to address them. So if you will, just please make sure that you are pulling a permit in the future because there can be and could be even with this, fines associated with that. So, but we do appreciate you coming here tonight and talking with us about it and providing an explanation.
Yeah. Absolutely understood on that. It's, and we do pull permits. We do a lot of work in, in Homewood and I think I've done some work for the city. And so very well understood that we do and always try to pull a permit and just obviously failed to in this case.
Mr. Jones?
Have you built other front yard fences in Homewood?
To my knowledge, I have not worked on any projects. It is possible that a company has, but none that I'm aware of at this moment.
Okay. Well, typically, we, we do provide front yard fences if there's a safety issue. And the only safety issue I see is where the, where you could drop off down into the driveway. But I don't see a safety issue throughout the rest of the, the yard. Do you?
It was explained to me by the homeowners that they were very concerned about their children being able to run out to the street and down the slope.
But how far is that from that fence to the street? I mean, it's.
Believe.
That, that's a long way. Anyway, okay. I, I just think we, we need to either decide are we going to maintain our, our, our ordinance or are we not? And if there's a special circumstance, which I hadn't heard yet, I, I would not support approving it. That's just me.
Yeah, Ms. Smith?
And I say this because fence variances come to my committee. And so we've had lots of people go through the process as they should and have been denied because they didn't have a legitimate hardship to require a front yard fence. Typically, when we grant front yard fence variances, it's because someone has a special needs child, they have a large, deep hill from the front of their house directly down to the street. There's always a very good reason. And people have come before us before to request front yard fences, and we have denied them. And they went through the process the right way. So to me, it's hard to justify granting a variance in arrears just because of a mistake. That, that doesn't really float well with me because I'm the one who's going to have to have the people come to my committee and say, well, I just didn't know. And we just did it anyway. And we're so sorry, can we get a variance? We have to have ordinances and we have to uphold them for a reason. There's a real specific process and, and that process has to, it has to, it has to work for fairness for everybody, in my opinion.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. I have a question actually for Mr. Pugh or for both. So I thought that there was a, a safety issue with topography. Is that not true? Is it a pretty serious slope?
Mr. Bowers may want to speak more to it than me or anyone, but that was definitely my understanding in going into it. Here's the reason why we're building it because of the slope coming down through the dead space there in front of the house. And it seemed reasonable to me when I saw the property.
And then the only other thing is, how far is this off the street again? How did you spell, many feet?
170.
The fence is.
The fence is 170.
Way off the street. And so, I mean, I, in my, I can understand why you don't think, I mean, I can see the oversight that it's so far back from the street, it doesn't, for some people, it wouldn't seem like a front yard fence. A yard, front yard fence might more usually be on the property line or close to the property line in the front. But I also understand what everyone's saying about going through the proper process channels. So you want to tell us anything else about the topography?
Hello? Is it going? From the slides that we did last week, yeah, there, there is significant drops. Like if you fall, if you go to the edge of the hill, this, really, this is the only reason we built the fence. The yard is big and open and we love the yard, but literally 80% of our front yard is some type of slope. There's some very steep slopes. Like this one's, actually, this is, this picture doesn't really do it justice. This picture does a little bit more justice. This is a really, really big slope. This is off the side of the yard and that continues around to the front. And it gets a little more, or a little less steep, but it still maintains a very steep grade. It was all, basically all around the front yard. And then, as you mentioned earlier, there is that back just straight up drop off.
That's only back, right? That's only back and also the driveway?
Yeah, this, yeah, this is if you're looking at the house, the driveway's on the right and that steep drop is right there on the right side of the house. And the driveway comes up right there.
Is it, is there, is there a fence there? I mean, I can't really tell.
There's not this, right now, that is a.
So that still exists?
It's just a retaining wall. Yeah, that's still there. The fence cuts off any access to that. It kind of goes right where that wall is and goes straight.
It connects in, if I'm not mistaken, Chase, to that corner right there. We see that, where you saw the downspout curving down. It connects into that front corner. This is on the left side, if you're looking at it, straight on from the street.
And Counselor Wolverton, so the fence that they put up kept them away from that area. Is that right? It keeps the kids away from that steep area?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, that's, that's obviously the most dangerous spot because it's just a straight, I don't know, fifteen, twenty foot drop.
And it's on the left right there. Yeah, I would get to see it. It's at least a fifteen foot grade change on the left side. On the front side, if I had, I'm purely having to guess here, but I would say that it's more of a, probably an eight to ten foot grade change from bottom of Pine Straw where the first pine trees are there in the Pine Straw area, from there up to the fence. And distance, again, gonna have to guess here. It's probably fifteen feet from there to the fence.
I would like to hear from Mr. Pew again, just in terms of the safety issues. I mean, that's, because to be honest, these aren't the best pictures. I mean, and it's really hard to get a sense. I don't really, I can't really see the fence here. I see it on the other picture with the slope. It's great that neighbors like it, but if there is a safety issue, I would like to hear about it because I do think that we don't normally do this with justification.
Correct. And it's a safety issue in the front yard versus the backyard.
Sure.
It's more, I mean, I guess it's subjective somewhat. I guess the homeowners felt like it was a safety issue. I can't, it's not something I would look at in a, from a code perspective and say, "A fence is required there."
Okay.
I guess that's what I should... Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. You're good. Okay. I was just gonna see, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? And I'll go ahead and close it. I'm gonna let you answer questions. I just wanted to see if I can close the public hearing.
I do have one more, just comment from a neighbor. Unfortunately, he got a fever and is not able to come.
Sure, go ahead and do that before I close it.
His, his comment was...
And if you will give his name.
His name is Matt Gosney.
What's his last name?
Gosney, G-O-S-N-E-Y. And he says, actually, it's on the slides from last week, actually included it. I thought it was in a text, but he sent it me in an email. If you wouldn't mind pulling that, the slide deck to, toward the end of the deck.
Brian, do you have that?
I'd have to go pull it from last week.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I will paraphrase, but basically, he said, basically, they have, they're our next door neighbors. They have a little girl. She comes over to play and he basically said the same thing, "Safety issue," and he says the fence looks great as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else to speak to the site? Not, and I'll close the public hearing. And Mr. Waltney?
The only comment that I was gonna make is, I get, I'm a big process fan, obviously, so I'm not gonna give it in here. But I put myself in the position of going back to when the fence, if they were going back to coming to request the fence before it was put in. And I can see some hardships here in the fact that it's, they don't have a backyard that's usable, they have small children, the front yard is very deep. And also I think the fence blends well. So I think all those things lend it the variance that I would be in consideration of approving.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? I've got one, but I was just gonna let her, Ms. Sims, did you have one? I'm sorry.
Yes, I just have a question for the resident. When we look at these fence variances typically, you know, if, if they do proceed, a lot of times they have to be taken down when the owner leaves. Would that be a criteria you would accept at this, I mean, deem that that would be at your cost at that time?
I would, I mean, for, I mean, it would be, not be ideal, obviously, but just for the safety of now while we're there, maybe they'd have to come to that, definitely. But I would definitely, whoever moves there, if they have children or people that bring children over, it's going to be the same issue. Like, if you, if you had, just imagine no backyard, you have your children in the front yard, or you have your friends' children or other families over. You, I mean, if somebody darts off and they, you know, squiggle out of your side or your hand just for a moment, off the back wall, down the hill, you'd have the same issues even for future people that live there unless they just didn't have people over.
Chase, I am very familiar with your yard and I have a similar situation where I live. We have a huge front yard and no backyard. And I think it looks great. One thing I want to say is even with a variance, it's a variance for you. It's not a variance for future property owners. So that, I mean, even if that was considered, that would have to, that's not even a, something we can go as far as to grant past your ownership, even if that was considered.
Then in that case, the new, if we were to sell, what could the new owners come and go through the variance process as well?
Yeah, that would have to be a whole nother, yeah. Yeah, that's not even something we could even really talk about. President Wyatt?
Mr. Jones, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Yes. Is there any consideration to a variance temporary? I think because I'm, I'm just not understanding.
Yeah, so, let me, let me speak to this issue real quick. The way this usually works and the reason that we usually have someone remove it is because it's only, the only time that I ever remember front yard fence variances being granted are situations where there is a child, a special needs child. And so there's an easily identifiable time where that, that concern is alleviated, either because the child has, has progressed to a point that it's not a concern or that family moves and so that is no longer there. I, I don't think we have ever done it in this situation where it would sort of, where the condition that would be at issue would live on to the next resident. So I, it, it doesn't seem to me to fit neatly into that, into that scenario, but I, does that answer your question? Okay. All right. Mr. Jones?
So are you familiar with what the ordinance states in terms of front yard fences? I mean, do you understand what it, what it states?
I do not know the wording. I understand that in the past, it, it's, my only experience has been with the smaller yards where, okay, yeah, I just can't, we don't, we can't fence in the front yard. And so I guess where I, the only thing where I'm coming from is, is out there. When you go to the property, it just seems, oh, obviously, this is their only yard. You would need a fence here. And so...
Okay, let me, okay, let me just make it simple. It's any fence that's in front, it goes beyond the front building line. That, that's what the ordinance states. So it doesn't matter where the house sits, on the, on the road. If it's in front of the front building line, you have to have some type of hardship to be granted a fence variance. Now, if, we can all debate on whether or not that, we, we want to have that ordinance in place, but right now that's the ordinance we have. And so where you're talking about that wall where it drops off, that, that is not in front of the front building line. That is behind the front building line. So you can put a fence there all day long and for safety reasons, but not in front of the front building line. So that, that's, I guess, we, we need to be firm if we're gonna uphold this ordinance or we're not. I mean, how it looks is irrelevant to anything, really, in my opinion, but...
That's just one opinion. All right. Let me just make sure I'm correct and that we're all on the same page. Mr. Kendrick, if we grant this variance, does it run with the land?
It would unless you make a provision.
Okay, so to answer your, that's a better answer to your question, Ms. Nelms, is unless we condition it upon while they own the, own it, then it would run with the land. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Mr. Wolverton?
I, I mean, I think, I think it, it's a difficult situation. I think most of us, if not everybody here, has kids, has had small kids. I've got several at home right now myself. I'm sure there are plenty of times when my wife hopes that we had a fence in the front yard. And I think that's what makes it difficult. Is that not following the proper procedure puts us in this, in this predicament. And it kind of opens Pandora's box for future dilemmas, whether they're intentional or not. And so just to kind of piggyback off of what's already been said, I fully understand the issues and I understand safety with kids. And I understand, quite frankly, some of those that have come before us, especially when a child lacks the cognitive ability, even, even if they were normal age and they'd have that cognitive ability. We've had several of those where that piece is lacking. And I think most, you know, obviously every homeowner that's doing it is doing it at an expense. But I, I do want to impress upon the homeowner that all of those families, given that expense and given the criteria that they came here for, did proffer that the fence did not carry with the land. If the, if the property were to sell, the fence would need to come down. Or there would need to be this process all over again, essentially. And so that, it's just kind of a difficult, you know, it's a difficult set of circumstances. That's, you know, that's the easiest way to, to explain it, so.
Got anything else?
No, no problem. That's fine.
Well, I would agree. It is a difficult set of circumstances and an unfortunate set of circumstances. Here's, here are my issues. First of all, I, I do agree that there are some fences that you can probably have that, that don't, you don't need a variance for with, with some of that drop off in the back like Mr. Jones said. I, I do think there are some of those. I do think the question about when it, whether or not you're gonna remove it sort of illustrates the, the distinction between this situation and the situations we have approved in the past with special needs children and things like, things like that. And quite frankly, other situations where we've had fences in the front yard and have, have forced residents to remove them. My, my biggest issue is this, though. I certainly recognize the safety issue that you're talking about and the hill and the drop off. My issue is that Homewood has an awful lot of hills. I mean, my front yard is, makes sure it's well quiet, nothing. And I think anyone who's seen my front yard would agree with that. If we allow this based on the idea that there's a safety concern with a hill in the front yard, it makes it very difficult for us, in my mind, to then not allow it later when it's requested. Because the idea of a safety issue in a, in a front yard hill or with, when you don't have a backyard or anything, we, we've just got a lot of properties like that in Homewood. And if we're gonna do that, that's fine, then we need to start allowing front yard fences as a matter of course.
We just need to get rid of the ordinance.
That's what we're gonna end up doing. So far, what we have done, at least in my tenure here, is that we have not allowed them, absent a special needs child that had a unique set of circumstances and a unique safety set of circumstances that was different than something that could occur throughout the city. And so I'm concerned about the precedential value of, of granting this. So that's my concern. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
We need a positive motion.
We need a motion in the positive regardless of what we're gonna do.
Yes.
Sure, absolutely.
So I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Ms. Andrus, and we will, because I think it's going to be hard to tell the outcome, otherwise we will do a roll call vote. Ms. Salter?
Thank you for indulging me in what's been a long day, so. Okay. Councilor Walt?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gear?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Sorry. Can I ask?
We gotta vote.
I understand that, but we had talked about provisioning it carrying with and not carrying with. I'm not clear on where we settled on that.
There is, there is no provision to, there is no provision to limit it at the current moment.
Okay, but he had implied that he was open to that if it meant the difference between it going through and not.
There's no provision at this point with the motion that was made to include that. That's all I can tell you. And we have to, we have to finish this vote.
All right. That's a no then.
Councilor Sims?
No.
Councilor Jones?
No.
Councilor Smith?
No.
Councilor Nelms?
No.
Councilor Andrus?
No.
Councilor Harden?
No.
And President Wyatt?
No.
Okay, so it fails. Eight to three.
Now can we?
If you want to make a different motion, you can make a different motion.
I mean, I'm, just to clarify, I thought that that proffer had to be delivered from the homeowner. Is that not correct?
No.
Not in this situation, no.
All right. Well, I would, I would move to approve conditional upon the existing fence coming down if the property were to change hands.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, and we'll do another roll call vote. Please, Ms. Salter.
Councilor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gear?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
No.
Councilor Smith?
No.
Councilor Nelms?
Yes.
Councilor Andrus?
No.
Councilor Harden?
No.
And President Wyatt?
No.
But that one passed.
All right, so that passes six to five and will be Resolution 2164. And Mr. Kendrick, what do we do about that provision?
I'll have to add that to the resolution.
So that's the fence coming down when the property changes hands, that was it?
Correct. All right, thank you very much. All right, that brings us to our next item, 150421, public hearing set for tonight for a variance to the signed ordinance at 2831 Linden Avenue, brought to us by Michael Disco and Wyatt Pew. And we'll start with a report from special issues.
We actually met last week and voted five to zero to refer this item out to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing. But the petitioner asked us to drop the item, so we'll do that after we open the...
Fantastic. We'll open the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing that there's no one, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion to drop from Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero. All right, which moves us on to our next item, 040421, public hearing set for May 24th, 2021, for consideration to rezone northern portion of 260 Oxmoor Road from Gerd to C5. The applicant is, well, the applicant's attorney is Chelsea Payne. This came from planning commission with a vote of nine to zero for a favorable recommendation of the rezone. So we will carry this item over to our next meeting where we will have the public hearing. Next item, 110421, request to authorize the mayor to sign contract with Motorola Solutions for the annual maintenance agreement for the public safety radio system and nice radio recorder, brought to us by Chief Hill and Battalion Chief Broadhead. And we'll start with a report from Finance. That's okay?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on May the third and voted four to zero to recommend approval of this budgeted item. So four to zero coming out of Finance.
All right, thank you. We have a, a motion and a second from Finance. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero and will be Resolution 2165. All right, next item, 130421, request for consideration of budget amendments for the fiscal year 2021 budgets, brought to us by Mayor McCluskey, Robert Burgett, and Melody Salter. And we will have another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval of these budget amendments.
All right, so that is a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments from the council? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's also eleven to zero and will be 2166. All right, next item is 180421, request for consideration to surplus obsolete and/or equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes, brought to us by James Yates, our IT Director, and Melody Salter. And another report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval of this item. This will be an ordinance.
And that's not supposed to have 21 in front of it. It's supposed to be 2806 ever passed, sorry.
Got it. No problem. Thank you. All right, so we have a report from Finance. Mr. Kendrick, can you give us the first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an order to declare certain personal property a surplus. To establish and declare that the following described personal property of the sea of homes is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes and is declared surplus. Section two, the mayor's, any clerk be authorized to dispose of the property above public auction. The Exhibit A describes three pages of Intel Access phones and two pages, a page and a half of Mitel 5340E IP phones and some computer hardware, some printers, some monitors, keyboards, TVs, DVRs, a switch, some servers, and 122 Intel phones and 37 additional Mitel phones.
All right, thank you very much. So I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Waltney, second for Mr. Harden, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Yes, sir. Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Gear?
Yes.
Mr. Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nelms?
Yes.
Councilor Andrus?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes.
So that is eleven to zero. Unless anyone has any questions or comments, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Waltney, second for Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter apologizing.
Councilor, yes, sir. Councilor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gear?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nelms?
Yes.
Councilor Andrus?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes.
There you go, sir.
All right, so that's eleven to zero and will be ordinance 2806. All right, which brings us to 160321, request for consideration of AT&amp;T Easeman at 234 Goodwin Crest Drive, brought to us by Wyatt Pew of our BEZ Department. And we'll start with a report from Public Works, Mr. Waltney.
Sorry.
I know they're up there. I looked.
Yes, sir. The Committee met last week and voted five to zero to approve. But it was conditioned upon correcting the, is that correct, Mr. Kendrick?
It was, I'm not sure. I wrote, I wrote Easeman at Centitake, the envelope he wants here last week.
Okay. We made it conditional upon some corrections that Mr. Kendrick was going to... Okay, we made it conditional upon some corrections that, uh, Mr. Kendrick was going to.
Yeah, I corrected it and provided it, the issues that we generally discussed.
But we haven't heard back from AT&T?
No, I sent it to him Thursday.
Uh, why don't we carry this over at least one time then and let, uh, see if we can get a response from them?
Sounds good, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so we'll carry that item up, over, uh, next item, sixteen oh four twenty-one, uh, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with City Arborist, brought to us by Mayor McCluskey. Um, we carried this item over, uh, I believe from last time, so, um, are there any questions?
I guess, I mean, I'm just interested in knowing how this impacts considering the budget questions that we're having, um,
we were, I guess, we were not gonna amend the budget, we're not gonna amend the budget at this time because we have an O one eleven contractual services where we pay, um, for certain contractual services like website and other things, encode software, and so, some of the amounts we put in there are estimates, we may have enough in there. If we don't, we'll do a housekeeping cleanup, because if y'all approve Arborist, you know, also, we don't know exactly how much time he's gonna have to put into it, so, we have money in there, even though his specific, we didn't know about him at that time, but if we need a cleanup, we'll come back to you, clean up if we run out of money.
Okay, I mean.
And, and also, I'll, I'll just expand upon that, for a second. So, previously, the city has been using Henry Hughes as the Arborist, and Henry, quite frankly, hadn't been charged, even though he's supposed to have been.
Volunteered.
Yeah, he, he basically volunteered, but he was, he was supposed to charge us and, and essentially never did. Um, so it's, it's a position that's, that's there, is on the books, and that there's money for, we're just using it for the first time, I guess, is a better way to.
Alright, so this doesn't change the budget, that's what, that was my main question, sorry.
Yeah, that's the line, I mean, it's been there, but we've had for at least two years now, I think Andy put it in there two years ago. Well, we, y'all already pay out insurance, rent, and everything like that, we were originally paying out contractual services.
Yeah, it's just that contractual services.
It's been there, is the point, this is not, um.
We were factoring this into the contractual services line now, I think is what we're talking about.
We've been using Henry in this regard for at least, at least two years now.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's eleven to zero and is Resolution twenty-one sixty-seven.
I'll let him know, because he's asking, right, because we also have a bid coming up with Dr. Jones on the main, so just let him see that. You're gonna be sitting in, sitting in a minute, I will let him know.
Would y'all like to say hi? He's here.
Oh.
Abram.
Happy to have you.
I'll let him know, sir, y'all with our bid planning.
Alright, uh, that brings us to the Committee, the amended Committee referral agenda. Uh, I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended Committee referral agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walton, second by Ms. Gier, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's eleven to zero, that brings us to other new business. Oh four oh five twenty-one, request to set a bid opening for a spring tree planting, brought to us by our new City Arborist. Time very well.
Getting busy already.
Yeah, it's a good thing the, the previous vote won the ball.
Yeah.
I, I looked through my crystal ball, y'all asked me to look at all the time, make sure I'm gonna bid properly.
So, uh, we will set that bid opening date for June seventh at four thirty.
You said that was, worked with you, correct?
So, that work?
Yep.
Alright.
And that's supposed to be a committee meeting for Dr. Jones to be able to open it, is that correct?
Right, there's an item going to Committee Referral as well, for that item, okay. Uh, next item, oh five oh five twenty-one, request to accept grant and authorize the mayor to sign the grant received from the Police Department, brought to us by Chief Ross, Detective Cameron Beatle, uh, Robert Burgett, and Melody Salter. Um, and, uh, Melody, I believe you have something on this.
Yes, sir, this is a federal grant that Cameron, Detective Cameron Beatle was able to secure, um, through Secret Service, uh, at least through pass-through from, from the government, um, for thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars worth of capital equipment that they'll use, um, in the jail interview room, but we had had some matching with the labor, with the grant to cover the labor, so y'all will be approving, um, it, it's in the budget transfers that we did a minute ago, um, but they're actually using restricted money for the, not the general fund, but their corrections jail fund for the matching seventeen ten. So thirteen nine seventy-two grant and one thousand seventeen ten that they're gonna use of the correction jail money to get this equipment solved, but the thirteen nine seventy-two is coming to us from the government.
Great, they always like to get money. Any questions or comments?
It helps us on capital when we close grants.
If not, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Walton, second from Ms. Andrus, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, and that is eleven to zero and will be.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, is that right?
Well, that's what I got.
Okay. Resolution twenty-one sixty-eight. Alright, uh, oh six oh five twenty-one, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Placemakers, uh, this item is from me. I'm gonna talk more about this in a minute, uh, a good bit more about this in a minute, but, uh, the, um, the rezoning, downtown rezoning plan has come back from the Planning Commission. Uh, we are not currently under contract with Placemakers, uh, and certainly would like their input on this as we move through the process of that being before us, um, so, uh, I would, uh, I hope that we could enter into a contract with Placemakers so that Susan can be present, uh, at least sometimes in person and sometimes by Zoom, uh, at some public forums that I'm gonna talk about in a minute, uh, as well as the eventual public hearing and, and, uh, do any work that, that is needed in terms of, uh, moving forward with that. So that's what this item is about, if anyone's got any questions about it, certainly feel free to ask, and if not, then, yeah, Mr. Simmons?
Yes, um, just looking at the proposed scope of the contract and the different tasks, I will note that task number one involves, um, two hours with each new counselor, um, to go over the background of the plan, and I would just propose, uh, and, and those are separate meetings, four separate meetings, I'd just propose that we four get together and do it in one two-hour session and make that, you know, two hours instead of eight.
Well, and, and it may end up being not just y'all as part of the issue, but, um, she's, she's given me some times that we can, we can work on that for, but if it ends up being that way, that's fine, I, I don't, I don't know that it would even, will even take two hours, I think that's just sort of her proposal, it, it may take less, uh, and it may, may involve less meetings than that, but I agree, we should do our best to reduce the, the amount of time.
Yeah, I mean, just in the spirit of everything we spoke about at five o'clock, I just thought that, I just wanted to bring that up, and maybe even think about, you know, kind of what, you know, most everything is kind of scoped out in hours for task one, two, and four, number three, there's, you know, it's a little bit subjective depending on how much provision and edits come back
Correct.
from the public forum sessions, um, so the only thing about that is, I don't know, um, if we wanna consider kind of like a cap on, on this proposal, or what is in the budget, maybe that would tell us more.
Well, we're gonna, again, we're gonna pay this one, so, so we identify funding source, we're gonna pay this, like the Arborist side of contractual services, with the caveat that we may have to come back to you for a budget amendment, depending on how some of the estimated contractual services come in.
Right.
Um, but we are gonna pay out the O one eleven general government contractual services.
I feel, look, I, I, my opinion is I feel confident that Susan's only gonna do the work that she needs, and so, it, I think we can.
She's only paid for the hours we asked her.
Right, and, and she's only in charge just for the work that we're gonna ask her to do, so, I think we can control that as we go along, if, if the will of the council is to put a cap on it, I don't have any issue with that, but I, I don't think we know at this point what, I don't have a way to gauge what that cap's gonna be, because to your point, we may end up with a lot, we may end up with a little in terms of what we need her to do in term, in, for revisions.
Okay, that's great, thanks, I just wanted to discuss that, I mean, especially just looking at task one, it looked like there was a, a number, so.
Yeah, I.
Knowing that we have the ability, you know, to not necessarily max it out.
Correct, and I don't think we will. Alright.
The contract is an hourly contract. Or whatever, it's, it should be paid per hour as it's worked.
Yes, I mean, and I did see that part, I just saw where also there was a set number of hours listed by each task, and that's why I asked.
I think that's an estimate of her time, just to give some.
But if we don't use it, she won't charge us.
She's only paid per hour as it's worked.
Alright, any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Ms. Andrus, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero and will be twenty-one sixty-nine. Alright, which brings us to oh seven oh five twenty-one, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one through May tenth, twenty twenty-one, brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. Mr. Jones?
Uh, Mr. Harden?
Yes, um, I did have a chance to review those vouchers, got some answered, questions answered, so I, I vote that we approve the voucher for a period of April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one through May tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Alright, motion from Mr. Harden, second from Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also eleven to zero and will be twenty-one seventy. Last item, ten oh five twenty-one, request to authorize the mayor to sign contract with Pitney Bose, uh, for postage, lease, and city clerk's Finance Department, uh, brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. Um, just so everyone knows, this didn't go to Finance because there was a time consideration with it having to be done by next week.
Yes, sir, and it's, um, and there was a problem, and he told Robert, he said, there was a problem with a server on their end, why they didn't get to us in time, um, but it's just the, the mailer that we used to weigh and put the postage on, but all, everybody in City Hall uses it on the second floor, um, and it's, it's split between my and Robert's department, it's budget, it actually came in under budget, um, but he apologized for whatever the server problem they had on their side, uh, we didn't get it in time, it's in the taking me.
Mr. Jones, do you have something?
No, I was just gonna say, Mr. Burgett already apologized, uh, for, for getting it late, so.
You never can apologize too much.
I have it here, I mean, it's a thirty-six month, um, lease payment.
Okay, anyone with any questions or comments?
I would need to approve.
Motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Alamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also eleven to zero and will be twenty-one seventy-one. Alright, which brings us to the end of our meeting. Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments?
Just a few. I wanna say thank you to everybody that had, uh, anything to do with last weekend's We Love Homewood Day and how absolutely amazing it was, uh, to see everybody from the five K in the morning to the, uh, booths and the rides in the afternoon, to the parade, and then to the street dance, um, it was fantastic to be, be able to see everybody sort of act like normal for the first time in, uh, in over a year, um, it was fantastic. Um, also, Homewood Grown was the night before, uh, yet another, uh, Homewood event that we look forward to every year. Um, it was very, very well done, and, uh, and glad to see a, uh, a fellow Homewody in Jay Mitchell do such a great job in his, uh, in his speech there. Uh, I wanna say thank you to, uh, all of our first responders, our police, and our fire for, uh, their, their hard work during the floods that we had last week. Um, I know I mentioned, uh, some infrastructure stuff to you earlier, um, but, uh, but what these men and women did, uh, being able to get people out of cars and out of apartments and everything else while this went on, uh, was, uh, was just wonderful. Um, we certainly appreciate their work, and I know the citizens do, I, I had several, uh, people reach out to me, um, and I've reached out to both chiefs just to let them know that, you know, they are, they are very, very well loved, uh, here in Homewood, so. A, uh, happy late Mother's Day to all of you ladies up here, I know it's, uh, a very special day for you guys, and, uh, especially for Ms. Smith, I'll let her speak to that, and then, um, thank you all for cleaning out the closet back there with the, uh.
I texted you, did you get it?
No, I did not.
I said we've got some ma, I said you're gonna be having some major decluttering.
I know, I know, yeah, so, but thank you for, uh, declaring all that surplus and getting rid of that.
But all that's gonna mean is we can see what else is back there, you're bringing another thing here.
No, 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 that's not what I said. Hopefully not enough.
Alright, uh, Mr. Walton, the, uh, the mayor stole my thunder and obviously didn't want to hear me speak for very long, so three of the five items I had, he's covered, but, um, just, you know, to that effect, Homewood Grown was a fantastic event, I think it highlighted the success that we've had this year in the school system for, for having school, like Dr. Hattner mentioned, we had school this year, and, uh, that means a lot to a lot of people, it means a lot to the children, um, especially those of us young kids, who are not skilled to be teachers, so the pandemic has taught me a profession that, uh, I had great respect for before and have even greater respect for today, so thank you to, um, Homewood, the Schools Foundation, and the, uh, Board of Education, and all our teachers in Homewood for the wonderful year we've had as we come to the end. Um, Parks and Rec, and Homewood Police and Fire for We Love Homewood Day support and covering us. Uh, I won't go into any details since the mayor covered that. Um, I did want to encourage all the counselors to get out, I know Counselor Wolverton has done it, with the, uh, Homewood Fire Department Annual Job Task Validation Course. You should go and do this, it's fun, put some gear on, sweat a little bit, bring a bottle of water or four. Yeah, it's a, it's a good experience, I went through it, um, two Fridays ago, and, uh, realized I have some progress I need to make, so. Thank you for the opportunity, Chief Bill. Uh, and lastly, Council Roundtable, were you gonna cover something?
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I was just gonna mention, we had a meeting last Thursday, um, it's a good experience, I mean, all kinds of good cooperation going on, one of the most notable items is the Waste Cooperative, that's, uh, currently, currently in the agenda. Um, so I'm excited to see, you know, another benefit coming from regional cooperation. Uh, I think this has, uh, the potential to save our city a good bit of money, so, go efficiency, that's it.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Gier?
Uh, yes, so, just, uh, thanks again to, uh, Melody and, uh, Robert for their hard work on the float, We Love Homewood Day, it was really special, and uh, thanks for all your efforts, uh, and also from the Arts Council, um, October tenth, uh, they have scheduled their first event, I think in over a year, Handmade Festival, uh, is scheduled for that Sunday, October the tenth, and hopefully, Pickett and the Park will also return, they're working on that part as well. Very excited to get that moving again, so, that's it, thanks.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Shaw.
Mr. Walton, step forward, did you step forward, Sandy?
I did not. No, we'll step forward, say before, five.
Uh, he's gonna be five.
He needs thirty minutes.
Yeah, five thirty.
Five thirty for fifteen minutes.
On the seventeenth at five thirty?
Yes, that's right.
Sorry, I just.
Sorry about that.
Alright.
Okay, great, um, just wanna just give a shout out to schools again, my daughter came down for cold today, she was unable to go to school, but she was still able to attend virtually, so I just think we have so many systems in place that she did not have to miss school despite not having, not being able to go into school, and she also got tested, and was tested negative for COVID, so we're grateful for that as well. Um, so I wanna send a reminder, June fifth, we'll have Street Fest at Patriot Park in Ward Two, um, and if you haven't been to Boca yet, have one of those delicious veggie sandwiches, you really should, I'm a carnivore, but that veggie sandwich is something lean. Okay, that's it for me.
Alright, Mr. Wolverton?
I will second the veggie sandwich, I also have one, um, and they have a broad and very large selection of, of wines, um, to go with it, so. I just wanted to thank you to all the first responders, um, over the last couple of weeks, I know we've had several accidents, some chases, a lot of trees down, a lot of flooding, uh, just a lot of, a lot of things that have, um, certainly reiterated, uh, what they do on a daily basis, um, and I do have a few pictures of the, uh, the fire course here, um, so Brian's gonna breeze through those real quick, but, um, it's, yeah, a, as Counselor Walton pointed out, it, it's not for the faint of heart, but it's also something that's fun to kind of gauge your fitness and where, um, where your strengths are and where you've got room to improve, so. Um, you kind of run the gambit out there, and I appreciate, uh, Chief Hill and Brandon Broadhead for having us out, um, and again, would encourage and maybe even challenge head-to-head anybody else that wants to go out there and do it again.
I just gauge my fitness just by looking at those pictures.
But, yeah. It will put you to task for sure, um, but yeah, there, there was also a situation with the tree, a very large tree limb that fell right around, uh, the end of school on Friday, uh, the Fire Department was out there, and I think the whole darn thing was gone within twenty minutes. Um, unfortunately, it did smash a car, but, uh, fortunately, nobody, nobody was actually hurt, and like I said, the, uh, the entirety of the limb was chopped and taken away in a matter of minutes, so, um, other than that, um, we've got a couple of things that have been carried over, uh, in Public Works. Um, do we have any updates on the spire agreement, Mr. Kendrick? That's the only thing that.
I've sent that to Mr. Pugh, just sent to Spire, I think, I've had no contact with him, it came from him, I.
Okay. Okay.
I've revised the things that I recommended and sent it back to him.
Is that correct? President White, that we don't have anything else? Let's see, hold on.
What, I'm sorry, what did I say?
Well, I was, I was just double checking that nothing, I didn't remember anything off the consent agenda, or referral agenda coming over.
I don't think, you have one item.
Okay, well, in that case, we will set it for ten minutes?
Fifteen minutes, yeah, so five forty-five for.
Did you set it five forty-five for five minutes?
Ten minutes. And I do also want to second the Mother's Day shout out to everybody that's a mom, which is almost all of us, we all came from one, so. We had a good brunch yesterday.
All right, Mr. Sims?
Thank you, President White. I wanted to start off updating on the beautification board. We had our May meeting today, it was in person, it was good for everybody to get together. And welcome to new members, which, which was great, so thanks again to the mayor for appointing some additional membership, and as far as that goes, we did kind of talk it through today. We currently are missing Ward One representatives on the beautification board, and we only have one representative from Ward Two. So definitely looking for additional applicants for those who are interested from those wards. Wards Three, Four, and Five have either two or three representatives on the board. So still looking for additional membership, but we had a great meeting today, talked through some things in person as well as caught up. One of the things we discussed were a couple of recent events from last week. One was we had the beautification award presentation at Edwood Station for last quarter's beautification award, so that was great. And then also, we recapped the creek cleanup that we did this past Saturday, turned out really great. You know, timing wise, cleaning up along Griffin Creek, you know, surprised how much trash there was, we actually filled up a full truck bed of garbage bags, and that's really two things, one, there's more down there than you would imagine once you actually get down the hill, and two, right after a significant rain event, more of that trash is actually on that bank. So it was, it was well timed to be able to do that right after the rain event. Thanks to Public Works for lending trash bags and vests as part of that. Ben Booth, new to the beautification board this past year, coordinated and brought waters and snacks and kahaba. Riverkeeper was out and brought trash pickers, so really appreciate everybody for chipping in on the collaborative effort. It was really a fun thing to do together, and beautify our city, we'll definitely be doing that again, so for anyone who misses last one, you can go on the beautification board Facebook page and check out some pictures, and also just know that we'll have another one, you know, probably within next quarter, so. Hope to have more people out next time. In closing, I also just want to echo some comments and appreciation toward our first responders and public safety in, in, in response to a lot that has happened in our community in the past couple of weeks. And also show appreciation to our teachers, you know, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, but, you know, really this whole year, we've been extremely grateful for our teachers and our district, and, and closing things on a high note, I think, and it's great to have this school year been such a success for so many, and again, hats off to everyone who poured in hours and hours of care and compassion and time and effort to making that happen. And finally, again, to everybody who is a mother or, you know, cares and is mothering, Happy Mother's Day, thank you.
Or if you came from one.
Mr. Jones had to leave early because it's his anniversary tonight, so good for him. So, next up is Ms. Smith.
Well, happy anniversary to Walter and Sharon, who were going to have a delicious dinner at John Marco's, so can't miss that reservation. And I'm not gonna set special issues because I didn't have any new items, and I've got two carryover items, so I'm not gonna set special issues this week.
You're not setting special issues?
I'm not, I, no, not in the history of me being the chair has that ever happened. So I'm just gonna stop right there, so that's obviously my lucky day. And y'all can just, you know, pray for the five of us who have seniors who are graduating on Saturday. We're about to ramp up to Awards Day and graduation and graduation practice and Awards Day practice and picnics and all that fun stuff. So that's happening, and then I brought this because on, those of you who know me, I'm a freak list maker, I make a list every single day to rent my life, and if it's not on the list, it doesn't, it doesn't happen. So on Friday, when we came home from Huntsville after winning the semifinal game, I made my list for Saturday, which has one item on it which says, "Win State Championship." I did not show that to Hardy before he went to play that game, but I knew after we won Friday that we were going to win Saturday, and I never had a doubt, and, which is exactly the same words. Kirsch asked him how he felt after they won, and he said, "Never had a doubt," and I was like, "It's exactly the same thing I said." So it was a really, really good day. It was a really good day, and I, I'm gonna shout out the girls, they had a heartbreaking loss in a penalty kick shootout, but man, they are awesome, and I'm telling you what, they're gonna be back there next year. I will probably be driving up to watch them play in whatever game they play next year, because they've got a lot of young talent, and they're gonna be good for a long time, so. But yeah, it's kind of cool to be the parent of the state championship winner. And there you go.
Ms. Nellum?
Well, I'm gonna just piggyback on that. I don't have a soccer player, but I have been hanging on her every word and every statement about what was happening and going on, and I apologize because I hadn't been able to make, you know, those games, and of course, I have a little bit going on myself, but. But I, you know, I still wanted to be there to support Hardy because I've just known him all of his life and have just had to support him through Barry and all of her posts. But I wanted to share a story that I, that I've shared probably ten times with my husband. When I was in high school, dancing with school fine arts, and the Alabama Ballet had an opportunity to dance with Bryshnikov, which was very, very rare, and they only picked one dancer to dance with him. She broke her foot in the middle of the performance and kept going. I'm relating that to Hardy because Hardy's shoe fell apart, and he had a hole, like was pretty much something you couldn't, can't perform with because that's what you're using the entire time, so I just wanted to share that. That he did something very similar, maybe it wasn't as painful, but very rewarding. But yeah, just want to say congratulations. Thank you so much for our city officials, EMTs, first responders. The rain, I know if Barry and I were getting the calls we were getting regarding the water and the rain, and I can't imagine what you guys were receiving. If, I mean, I went out three times, like I was somebody, I don't know what I was gonna do to have to, you know, take witness to some of the things that were going on that I had to document. And I just want to thank everybody because I know we all were experiencing some distress over everything that was going on, so thank you, everybody.
Ms. Andrus?
Hey, we have had some hard, really hard things that have happened in this community in the last couple of years, I mean, really. But we have got some amazing people that live in the city and that work for the city, so just thank you to everybody. I am just so, I'm gonna cry, Saturday and graduation in the class of twenty-twenty-one, and I'm just so proud of all of the kids, soccer team, just all of them. I've been working at the high school the last couple of months, and I've just enjoyed it so much, and it's been so quiet without the seniors there, so I just, I'm gonna miss them so much, it's such an amazing class. Mayor, thank you for participating in the We Love Homewood Day five K. That was a great crowd, and like you said, I felt like we were getting back to normal. And I helped Nevada Spurlock put on, just do, I helped with the registration, and we just really had a fun crowd, and she had a great showing. And then the rest of the day, it was just so fun to be with everybody and the parade and everything, so I know everyone's already said how much fun they had, but Melody and Robert, you guys really over, just, you know, knocked it out of the park with the float, we had a great time, so thank you for that. Council Roundtable, I thought that was just a great gathering, we got a new member with Pleasant Grove, we've opened up to all the cities in Jefferson County now, but we were excited to have Yolanda join us from Pleasant Grove, so it was really great to see her. And we had a great presentation, and like you've mentioned about waste management, and anyway, there's just a lot of stuff that we can take on, you know. And we are modeling ourselves after the Mayor's Association, so, and we are working in celebration of the Mayor's Association in, in concert with them, so. And then I wanted to mention lastly, well, also I wanted to mention that if anyone's looking for waterworks, they are literally right outside of my driveway. So Ward Five, if you're wondering where the progress is right now, it is literally right outside my driveway. And then, but they're working fast, so they are working fast, so it's, it's moving, and then lastly, the Unified Command is demobilizing after next week, so if that's not progress, I don't know what is, I mean, that is good news. COVID-nineteen Unified Command for Jefferson County is demobilizing after next week. So that will be done, so that's really exciting news, so everybody get your shots, that's all I got.
Mr. Harden?
It is, takes a lot of creativity around here to be the last one and not be usurped on all your things that you were gonna discuss, like the soccer team win, of course, Barry's son was in it, my son just got to go watch. Or the five people we have, five of us have seniors this year that are all graduating, we think, between now and Saturday. There was an article in today's Wall Street Journal, I didn't get to really read much of it, but I saw more of the headlines that, that elementary schools are struggling to deal with the kids who, the kindergartners and kids who went virtual last year and this school year, and the effect it's having and how it's putting them behind, and I think of the, of the school board and the, and the risks they took to do what they did, which was say, "We think it's better to have them back in school," and that was, I'm sure, took a lot of courage, so, so we, we need to thank them for, for a courageous decision that appears to be a very good decision for the kids, at least in our world, long-term. But the, the storm Thursday, I, I was supposed to meet a guy from lunch Wednesday, I think was the storm day, and he had to, we had to move, and he said, "Why don't we go to the club?" And I knew there was a storm coming, I said, "Okay, we'll go to the club," and we're in what's called the grill, and we were right on the window, and like the table on the window, and so you're looking out, and this massive storm's coming through, I mean, wind and just lightning and thunder is kind of cool to watch, but, and there were these, this table and chairs out there, out on the patio, and I kept thinking to myself, "If those start raising up, I'm moving out of here," but anyway, the rain was obviously beyond, I mean, I've seen some pictures of people's cars and, and the creek coming up and going, hitting the walls of people's houses, so we, we certainly have some infrastructure work that's gotta get done, Mayor, and I know you focused on that, and that's gonna take some money, but it is important that we get, get some infrastructure in. I'm done.
All right. That leaves me. First, I won't belabor the point because I do have a few things to talk about tonight, but thank you to all the city employees and first responders. That storm was not normal. It's not one of the ones that usually comes through here, and I can tell you, as someone who lives on a steep hill, the amount of water that was coming down that hill and off my yard was something I haven't seen in twenty years, so, in the twenty years that I've lived here, so it, it, it really was unbelievable. And, and our employees, as usual, didn't flinch, got out there and did what needed to be done, took care of people, so we appreciate that. Secondly, congratulations, Ms. Smith, on, on soccer. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a coincidence that Hardy's statement about the game was the same as yours, that he, he got it from somewhere, so.
Basically the Ted Lasso.
Yeah. And lastly, as I noted earlier, the downtown rezoning plan has come back from the planning commission, and so it, as you might have noticed, it was not on the agenda tonight anywhere, and will not be on the agenda for a little while. Instead, what we are going to do is, I am, am going to set three public forums to occur over the next few weeks. Susan Henderson will be at those as well to answer questions. We will then take whatever information we get from, and feedback from those public forums, and we will come up with whatever document we're gonna come up with. And then that document with any changes that are made to it will then be published, and we will add it to the agenda at that point when we've got something together, so that everyone knows what we're talking about, and we will set the public hearing and have the public hearing pursuant to Alabama law. So with that, and, and the reason for that is, I think it's important, and I know that everyone up here thinks it's important, to get that feedback on the document that we currently have. It hadn't been up here for a while, and I think it's important to, for us to have those public forums and to, you know, hear what everyone has to say about it, and that way we can then move forward with that included in it, rather than publishing what's there, doing that, and then starting over again. Let's get the, let's get the thoughts on the front end, make what changes we need to make, and, and deal with it officially and formally from that point forward. So with that, I am going to set these, again, with times that I've already cleared with Susan, who will be appearing by Zoom. The first of these public forums will actually be this Wednesday, May twelfth at six PM. We will then have one the following Thursday, May twentieth at six PM. Wednesday, the twelfth, Thursday, the twentieth. And then we will do one on Saturday, the twenty-second, at nine AM.
Are they here?
They will be here.
Saturday, when?
At nine AM.
What date?
Twenty-second.
And where they gonna be held and are they published?
They're probably gonna be held in here.
The council's.
So we will have those three, see where we are, and move forward as we need to from there, with that comment, so. Certainly, anyone from the council is welcome to attend. I know that everyone may not be able to come to all three, and that's perfectly fine too, but feel free to attend, any that you can attend. Ms. Andrus, did you have something?
I forgot to set P and D, I'm sorry.
What?
I forgot to set P and D.
Oh, well, it's too late now, I'm sorry. You set P and D for five fifty-five?
Yes, thank you, and I'm sorry.
No problem.
All right, keep going.
All right. Okay, so that's the plan. Anyone got any questions about that? Ms. Gier?
I don't, I don't have a question per se, but I did want to follow up with something that Councilor Sims said when I was reading over the scope. I, I do think it's a great idea if possible, and I don't know if Susan is still on, but to get the four new ones, new ones of us together, if she can, and, you know, we can hear one another's questions and answers, I just think it would be a good process for us four to be together, and I know that that scope of work is not, you know, something that has to be lived by specifically, but I would appreciate if we could make that a part of the plan.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, well, then with that, we will adjourn this meeting, and we will see everyone next week for committees, and our next council meeting will be May twenty-fourth.